Hello.
Call the City Council of West Liberty, Iowa to order, and we have a quorum present. I just got a text, Councilmember Martinez, or Dominguez, that she cannot attend tonight. But we are joined by Councilmember Martinez, Councilmember Schultz, Council, Mayor Pro Tim McFerrin, and Councilmember Perezic. So the first order of business is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, the agenda is, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. The second item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda, which is the City Council, and it's from December 3rd. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The consent agenda is approved. Next up is item number four, a meriorial proclamation, the key to the city. And so to my friend, Francisco Martinez, I have to make a confession. I try to be truthful in everything that I do, but I got you here under false pretenses. We are going to indirectly honor Latinos Unidos, but we are here tonight to give you the key to the city of West Liberty. We are very honored by everything you do. So if you will join me, and if the council wants to join me here with the flags.
Okay.
And if you'd like to have your family with you, that would be great too. Okay, and oh, we have, yeah. The official parts here. So this proclamation needs to follow. The proclamation honoring Francisco Martinez, Javier, Francisco Javier Martinez Sixto, and awarding him the key to the city of West Liberty, Iowa. Whereas it is fitting to celebrate and honor the diverse ethnic and cultural heritage that enrich our community through various festivals and events. Whereas the United States of America is a nation that strives on the contributions of individuals from a multitude of ethnic backgrounds, fostering a vibrant and inclusive society. Whereas Francisco Javier Martinez Sixto moved to West Liberty in 1997, has demonstrated unwavering dedication to the community through his active participation and leadership. Whereas as a devoted member of St. Joseph's Catholic Church, Francisco Javier Martinez Sixto recognized the importance of celebrating the Hispanic heritage of his series, and thus organized the inaugural Hispanic Heritage Festival within the church in 2006. Whereas in 2016, responding to the encouragement of community members, Francisco Javier Martinez Sixto expanded the Hispanic Heritage Festival to encompass the entire city of West Liberty, thereby fostering greater cultural unity and appreciation. Whereas in 2017, Francisco Javier Martinez Sixto established Latinos Unidos, an organization dedicated to promoting Latin culture and civic engagement, which now oversees the annual test data Latina under his direction. Whereas Castina Latina has grown into a significant annual that attracts hundreds of attendees to West Liberty, celebrating the area's contributions of individuals of Hispanic heritage, both to the local and to the United States of America. Therefore, now therefore be it proclaimed that Francisco Javier Martinez Sixto is hereby awarded the key to the city of West Liberty in recognition of his outstanding efforts in organizing and sustaining this vital and joyous annual celebration. And then we will do one with people in the community.
Well deserved.
I know that Antonio has to get back to his business. And I thought you might like to have a picture with people that came for the event. So anyone that would like to have their picture taken with the person who has the keys to our city, please come up.
Well, if you guys have a minute. We'll talk about this, always be, you guys were not aware, but I would like to sing a song for this occasion and in his behalf.
Nice.
If you guys don't mind.
No, we don't mind.
Don't run it, you guys don't like.
Dr. Carol, we want to come up. We'll probably need to cut, gather in close.
Gather in, close by the flags.
Yeah, you can come behind us too.
I was gonna say, anyone who would like one.
I'm gonna take that, make a picture for you.
All right, in the picture and then, yeah, then you'll sing, okay. Yeah, come in as close as you can.
Three, two, one, smile. Three, two, one. Thank you, everyone.
Do you want one with just your banner? If you could go.
Smile, Paco. One more, you guys. Not enough space. Three, two, one, five. Thank you.
This is the beautiful song of you saying, thank you.
Thank you all. The rest of the business that we have tonight, it's rather mundane. So if you want to leave, you don't have to stay. I know that Antonio closed his business for a short time, so that I know that he wanted to get back and be able to open up the store. So no one's required to continue staying, except the council. All right. So next up are.
You want to say something?
I want to say, thank you, everybody. This, this for, for my family, because they support me and they support and also work too hard with me and all the guys that's another Latinos, I mean, they will be here right now, and they work with us also, so thank you.
Item five, beer and liquor license. First is Pellicay. Pellicay Bar and Grill, 12-month Class C retail alcohol license. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve. Is there a second? Is there a discussion?
Has there been any issues?
In the past year, there's been three incidents up there. Anything you're under, you're in point first there. Sort of the time I charge for. And fifth was made, there was assault that led to a burglary and assault. And so because of the incident that originally occurred at, that stemmed from the bar. And then sometime recently, there was a couple almost placed that the officer tried to get there in time dispersed.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, and the license is granted. Next is the Jeff's Market. Is there a motion renewal? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there discussion?
So on this one, I just want to make everybody aware, there are certain establishments that have the ability to have automatic renewal through the ABB website. Jeff's Market is one of those. You guys will start to see it come before you, but this means that they are able to automatically renew where their license was generated through the ABB.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is approved. Next up is El Patio Restaurant. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next up are City Reports and City Manager Gertz and I talked about that we didn't have anything for our city engineer to report tonight, and so we excused them from the meeting tonight. And we have the water treatment report and the park and recs, and the library report has been sent by email. So are there questions about the reports that have been submitted? Hearing none, we'll move on to committee reports, which there have not been any, well, we have the fire department committee. So do you want to give the report on?
Sure, we had a, we went into mediation with the rural trustees in the fire district, between city and the rural trustees. And it was very fruitful. In the end, we were able to come to a compromise. But it did take some back and forth, but we were able to reach an agreement, which I believe was posted. So with all this, many hours that we've dedicated to it and work that people have done, we at least are able to move on with an agreement to start with fire first. And then once they get the ball rolling and get all of the boxes checked on what we need to do to form the ability to accept the EMS end of it, the ambulance side, then in, I believe, a year's time, we will have that opportunity to bring in the ambulance to the agency at that time. So that's.
And if the governing body needs more time than the one year, they can request that from the authorizing entities. So what the next steps are, that the rural trustees will need to approve the agreement that was reached. And after the rural trustees have come to an agreement, or if they approve the agreement, then it will come before the council. And my recommendation as mayor to the council is that you approve the agreement. But I know you need to see it before that's the case. And so it will be sent to all of you, but once we have the final copy of that. The other thing I think that you should start thinking about is that if the agreement is approved, there are four members of the City of West Liberty who participate on the governing board of this entity. And so one of those is an automatic appointment of the mayor. And then there can be up to two members that are members of the city council. And the third member is someone that is appointed by the city council. So those last three appointments are your responsibility as council members to come up with who would serve on that governing board. Any questions or?
Will that be after the first year?
Will it be after the first year? Yes, I mean, this is our last council meeting for 2024. So, and the agreement is that the trustees approve this first. And then I have told the trustees that we may have a special council meeting to approve that, but that we need to give seven days' notice to all of you for that special council meeting. So you have time to be prepared and in attendance at that council meeting. Good question, any others on that? Okay, we're now to item number seven, vendor voucher claim list number one in the amount of $150,721.30. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Was there a second? Yeah, sorry. Okay, is there discussion?
Question on the buy. It's just this customer versus deposit.
Yeah, those are the utilities. So when customers apply their deposit, I think they are moving out. There's any additional fact you done that is responsible for basically this then, that it was. It's to see the customers being in the front of it, it's just the customer that you've invested.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. All right, next up is vendor voucher claim list number two. We deferred on this last week because we had three council members here. And council, I believe that council, Mayor Pro Tim McFerrin wants to abstain from this vote. So is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Are there any, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
I abstain.
And abstention noted. Okay, the motion has been approved. Next up is the library pre-claim aid claim list of the amount of $11,600 or $810.40. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next up is item number eight, public comments and/or correspondence. So this is the time that is set aside for public comments on topics of city business other than those in the agenda. And so first we'll have public comments, and we'll have city council, public comments and correspondence, and the city manager, city clerk. So if you want to speak, state your name, address for the record, and keep your comments, but no more than two minutes. Are there any public comments? Our economic development director, Ken Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ken Brooks. We lead one night meetings, third street. Wanted to take a moment to recognize specifically Chief Hauser, but also the rest of city staff that organized and put on a fantastic shop at the top program this year. That is something that our community should be proud of, not only this year, but every year. And the dozens of children that that program serves. So it goes to the chief and city administration and school district for helping put that on.
I think that deserves the recognition. I participated for the first time, and I'm still moved by that experience. I encourage, if council members have the opportunity to participate in it, it is well worth your time. And it was, I think, I think it's one of the most enjoyable things that our staff do in the year too. It benefits all the way around. Are there any other public comments? All right.
I just, I really appreciate what you installed, the large grant Walmart. And Ken was even helping with the presence and stuff on the bus. And it's a huge team, I'd say, and I really appreciate that. City staff that gave out that presence.
Well, yeah. Ken and Krista were both shopping, participants in it, yeah. This was great all the way around. All right. Are there any other public comments? Hearing none, we'll move on then to check and see council members. So councilmember Martinez.
I just had multiple people asking me, then we're getting our dog park.
Oh.
That's all I have. If people want a dog park.
I just had a couple of the property owners, but it'll be addressed later on with the garbage rates and stuff.
Yeah.
The concerns there. Okay, we'll talk about that later.
Sure. Okay, city manager.
I'm the city manager.
And city clerk. Okay. All right, we'll move on to all business. First up is ordinance 2024 1119 hyphen 10, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of West Liberty, Iowa, by adding a new section dumping privately owned dumpsters, third and final reading. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, clerk will call a roll.
Schultz.
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
McFerrin? Yes. Freezak?
Yes.
Motion passes void zero.
Next up is ordinance 2024 1119 hyphen 11, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of West Liberty, Iowa, by amending provisions pertaining to council meetings. It is the third and final reading. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved to seconded. Is there discussion? If I understand correctly, if the, if there is an affirmative vote on this tonight, then the clerk is required to do public notice that this has occurred, and then the council has the authority to set the time of the meeting.
So what will happen is the resolution is on here decided, because I want, once this is passed, I will put it into the paper. It will be in the paper prior to your first council meeting in January. So we will be able to set that.
Okay, there's further discussion. Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
McFerrin? Yes. Freezak?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes void zero.
We then move on to new business, and item A is discussion and appropriate action by the city council on direction for adding a section to the code of ordinances for garbage for multi-dwelling units. Multi-dwelling units, yeah. All right, so we start out with discussion, then there's a motion, and it's consent. So discussion.
So mayor and council, I, with the assistance of the clerk, we put together a memo to, to best simplify where our history and where we got to with the ordinance that is approved. Just because there was some communication, maybe with some misunderstanding. And so, so on that ordinance that was approved in September, the purpose of it was to clarify the building, billing within the multi-residential. That was a part of the original ordinance that was in 2022 5171. And so with that said, that as you heard me communicate, this reset the billing process where the invoices are now going to the property owner, the landlord versus the individual units by this. And the dumpsters are a commercial charge, because we do not have a residential dumpster. We only have a commercial dumpster fee charged. So with that said, in November 2024, upon the passage of the ordinance, we were approached by three landlords, and I know that they've approached you folks, expressing their concerns and with regards to the billing process, which in addition led to concerns of the rates and conversation requesting private contracting with a third party. So without going into too much detail, because I'll let you folks bring that up in your discussions that you've had. Essentially, the solid fund, the solid waste fund has faced revenue shortfalls due to previous underbilling. This has happened historically for over 12 years. And, you know, staff continued to work on rate studies, which are identified with how the ordinance is established to the billing. And with the due diligence of the clerk and utility billing clerk and our public works director, within the last 12 months, they identified that the multi-units were being underbilled. Um, within the last twelve months, they identified that the multi-units were being underbuilt for the weight of solid waste that was being removed from those properties. So through that, um, again, was whether we would have changed the ordinance to be more clear to the, uh, customers of a community. The fact of the matter is, is that the, the units were being underbuilt and they needed to be corrected with their bill. Uh, their units were being charged per, per one dump. And they were not being charged at the appropriate dumpster rates. So with all of that review, then that's what has led to the misunderstanding by these property owners thinking that the rates changed. And so again, what I did was I'm identifying when the rates were effective. And this ordinance did not have a rate change with corrected. And I, I find it difficult to use the word corrected, I want to say reset, is to how the billing fits with the ordinance, okay? So, through conversations with, um, the property owners, there is a request for council to consider an addition, um, to the existing ordinance. To allow them to, um, enter into private or a third party for the solid waste removal. Um, as believed by them that they would be provided a lower cost for their solid waste removal. So if I understand correctly, the, what, what happened was is the cans that the city provides, no matter quantity those equal in a one unit or one structure with multi-units does not equal the quantity of the dumpsters, but we were charging as if they did, and that's not correct. So we weren't charging for the commercial dumpster use that we needed to, because that's what we were providing, correct? So I'm gonna ask the clerk, um, to assist with this because, um, I was not a part of the calculation that was created. Um, identified in the history and there's previous management, um, created a fee schedule outside of the existing ordinance. And so there was a calculation method utilized and, um, I believe if you're along the lines as to what that calculation method was, taking into consideration the largest ninety-six gallons.
Right.
And there, it does not equate to, um, the dumpsters.
Right, and so we had to make it fair to the, the dumpster quantity and the amount of times it was being dumped, so.
And I want to allow the, sorry, I want to allow the clerk because with her work and her investigation and she, she has a, a lot more knowledge on the history of.
Yep, so, the rates that were provided, um, it was dependent on a few different things. It was dependent on how many people were, like, how many units were within the building. Um, some of them, so if the dumpster size was a three yard, for example, it was only charging a sixty-five gallon rate to those units. It didn't take into consideration that there would be multiple dumps. So had it been calculated for multiple dumps, those units would have been closer to the fifty-dollar range rather than the twenty-seven-dollar range that they were at. Um, so essentially what happened is all of those cans, let's say that we were able to put all those cans down there. They all would have been charged for that individual can usage, but then you have the dumpster that all of this is going into, all of the solid waste is going into. And it was not equating out because it was being dumped not once, but two times. So the weight of that and the breakdown differential for the cost of that was not being split.
The only thing that I would add is that the arrangement to not follow the ordinance did not go through the city council.
Oh, yeah.
At the time that it occurred.
It, it was something that occurred before this council.
Yes.
Yes, right, okay, okay. Or I should take that, before this current administration, that council, that it was done per administration, but it was previous to this administration.
It was effective in two thousand and eighteen, yes. So we've been in deficit basically since that.
So, I, and I, I'm, I'm wanting to leave books to have time to discussing even now with this question, but I'll do a filling before I go into budgeting.
Yeah, I mean, we've heard from a lot of people.
So, I guess my question is, so if they're, they're allowed to go back to, or allowed to have a private contractor or something. They're not, you're saying they're not?
What ordinance of?
They said they were before. From the discussion, I know, okay, I'm just going off of what I thought I heard.
So who has, so the commercial dumpsters provided to commercial businesses are allowed to fight a contract?
Mm-hmm.
Mixed use that are residential with the residential, so they um, fall under, uh, ordinance where residents are not permitted to go to a private contractor. Is that?
Yeah, well, that answers because they said they're, they would just go back to a private contractor. So I would hate them even that's revenue that would lose if that's case, if that's not the case, then that's a good discussion.
And if, if we were, I think there's a couple of points to your comments, uh, council member, um, one is that, um, I don't know what, so that was gonna say on, uh, on different maps, um, one is that this, if we were to change the ordinance so that they could do that, we would have, we have to change the ordinance to do that, that. Uh, I'm a firm believer that we should not, um, negate any ordinances of the city, if, if we need to change, we should make the changes to the ordinance and, um, that all of us need to follow those, um, so, uh, that's point number one, um. I can't remember what my second point was, I'm sorry, I don't think of it.
I just want to have a better understanding of it.
That's, I want everyone to.
Go about changing anything, I just want a better understanding of it, so that I know.
Thank you.
From where they're coming from.
Yeah.
For one thing, because our property owners are very valuable to the city, of course.
Absolutely.
And you're providing a good service, so I don't know if it's, because it was not, or miscalculated that first, we're at a time that we go back and but you said this is the way it would be for households there.
Correct, for more residential, so for residents, you have, the largest you have is a ninety-six gallon and you're, and you receive that service once a week. So your cost for that ninety-six gallons is once a week. If you were to receive a pickup twice a week with that ninety-six gallons, then that's going to equate close to the fifty-dollar charge as well. That you're only receiving one. For these mixed units, they, uh, in receive, uh, essentially receiving, um, and what it equates out to is four pickups of dumpsters in a monthly basis. So if we take a look at two thousand eighteen to today's timeframe, that's money that the property owners or even the tenants, um, didn't have a cost, but they, that they were able to, you know, we're not asking to recoup that money from them for that period of time. What we're doing was resetting it and correcting it going forward. Um, to get, to get us going on the right track to align the, the cost, the of the expense of removing the weight, because no matter, no matter what, there is the cost to remove the weights. Um, and aligning it with, with ordinance, we consist just, you know. So since we would not, since, since residents, property of residential property is not permitted to choose their own contracting. I mean, this is where for mixed use, those are residents, then they're not permitted to choose their own private contractor on the ordinance right now. So, with that said, the, the conversations had with two of the property owners. Um, and there was a third one, but, uh, again, uh, wasn't as vested in these conversations as the other two property owners. Mostly because they, again, as you stated, they're valuable to our community. They own substantial amount of units and, um, for us, we're not trying to make a negative impact on those property owners. However, the negative impact has been on the solid waste fund. Because we're in a deficit and we provided the service to those property owners already. They've already received the service of the waste being removed. So now we need to move forward with the quick building.
So, correct me if I misstate this, but, uh, I think two of the property owners now have uh, requested once a week dumping rather than twice a week, which brings the rate down closer to what, uh, they have been paying, number one. And, um, number two with that, um, I think both of them are taking ad- additional measures to stop, uh, the, uh, public dumping.
Yeah.
And those, um, that, um, and of course the ordinance that we just had the third reading of, which will go into effect after uh, being published, um, puts more teeth than what the city can do about, uh, illegal dumping. I think that that impacts us, um, a number of ways here, uh, that, uh, landlords, I think, were taken advantage by, uh, public dumpers into their, uh, and also I think that's resulted in more rejections of recycling, uh, because the people that are, uh, illegally dumping, uh, have not been as concerned about proper recycling. So, I think the question is, uh, initially, city staff recommended that, um, we, uh, do a change, uh, in addition, I think was the term to the ordinance uh, that would allow for, uh, private, um, companies to provide this service. There's been a change on staff's recommendation, and I think council, um, had, uh, has to decide whether they would like to go ahead with that, I think that's been sent to the codifier, uh, for us to get a sample back.
That would be the direction, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have to give the direction.
And then, then we will have that communication to get that first started.
It just seems like it's confusing because you have residential, which gets the city provided, you know, containers. Then you've got these multi-family units that either all multi-family unit structure or multi-family unit above and commercial space on the bottom. And they get commercial dumpsters, so it puts us, puts them in a special kind of category.
Is that right? The, the second group, if there's residential, there, if there's multi-units. Then that puts them in the category of being a mix.
So there's mixed and multi, yeah, so there's mixed.
Okay.
Which would be, you have commercial and residential, and then you have multi-dwelling units. Such as the porn street apartments or the insurance street.
But they're all, they're providing a commercial.
Yes, because the city doesn't have a residential dumpster.
Right.
And there's a responsibility to be able to put.
And that's why we're, that's where this is stemming, correct? So the city is not the property management owners, right? And so property management is with, with the ordinances, putting the ordinance back on the property owner who worked with their tenants as to how they. Yeah, because we can't provide, you know, an, an equal container. And, and part of our conversations was, um, again, what I'm saying in here from staff. You know, I, I want to be clear, this city staff values the property owner's state value, um, the, the multi-residential and, and the work that's been done to fit our, our housing gap, okay? We're, but, but we don't want to confuse the value of that with the cost of the service that the city is providing. Because there is a cost to it. There is a convenience for those units, um, that comes back to waste management, as the mayor has stated. Through this exercise, we have property owners that are taking additional steps. Because the convenience of a dumpster and throwing your garbage away versus your ninety-six gallon that's such as your home. You, you, you look at a dumpster and you, you don't think about that capacity, but you look at your ninety-six gallon, you're like, okay, this is the capacity I have. So it's waste management and working with that property owner, we've always been willing to do that to assist with education. It's also cost-effective conversation, um, which they presented some of their own resolutions now is that they would look to look at, um. Yeah, I, so, I think that's, yeah, okay, well, I need to see. And, and, and really, I mean, it, again, it comes down to council, but more decision. Staff is just recommending, um, you know, resetting, recouping, um, continuing to recoup the costs. Um, if we, if we move to that, at some point in time, these costs are going to be reflected on other utility other garbage customers, um, in order, because the service and the cost is there, it's been impacted and now it, it has to be collected and recouped, um, and maintained. Um, in addition to that, I would say that once you go the direction of, um, making an addition or amending, um, we just always say, you know, will that set the precedent for the next individuals to come in and then will that now become the practice of council to change ordinances, um? But in this case, again, that's, that'll be your decision to weigh out what the property owners have convert, communicated with you.
Which is a good question.
I guess, here we have an addition. So if they were to, they're, they're part of a private, is that what they recycle and then we're gathering? And they would have to find garbage and recycling, again, that's.
Well, if they choose recycling, yeah. But.
But then I guess.
I have to, I just have to give you a little bit more. Recycling, so there is a fee for recycling that is separate from the dumpster cost. Because the recycling fee, it is a program that we initiated with the curbside under a grant with the DNR. So each, no matter what, the, the billing will always contain the recycled fee. Because that is a separate program from the solid waste.
If you're doing solid waste, are you still?
We would not provide a recycling dumpster.
Yeah, I guess it's. Looking at the bigger picture, if you're a third party. You don't know how it's gonna affect the times of time, which could lead to higher rent. Which is gonna put that on us. It could be leaving our community because it's expensive. That's why I think we should have added an addition, right? What it means? We can see third.
We should, we shouldn't, shouldn't.
Yeah, because I think giving. Even my life is very short.
Well, either that or, or this, uh, the third party, um, needs of cost-wise, where it really is very low.
So, you have more, you have a division here of more you wanted to talk about, but I want to make sure the council questions are answered on this.
I, 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 unless you have questions, I feel, I think you all have a clear understanding of the budget impact. Um, and again, I mean, either, at some point in time, we're gonna have to re-evaluate because we have to allow the correct, the reset of the bill to take in effect in order to reevaluate with the revenue and, and if we're moving in the right direction, um. With the revenue and and if we're moving in the right direction um. Again, by removing service from and having them go to a third party. It's not allowing us to continue to recoup the cost of the service that we've already provided. And as council member pre- pre- said, we also will lose that revenue um going forward.
At least one extra shot to read reset. Before we leave, before we actually consider the revaluation.
So I would recommend a revaluation of of rates twelve months from the date that we. Uh made the effect of the reset, reset um. I don't know if that's gonna allow us enough time, but the previous ordinance that was passed in two thousand and twenty-two. By seventeen one ordinance, it is has a three percent um adjustment. So we adjust the billing by three percent um by July one. Um there's a requirement to have a review in April um. To see how the revenue projections are offsetting the expenses. Um but in this case, it was gonna come too soon, so my recommendation is if we could take a look at it in twelve months. Um but I don't feel, I don't feel like I have enough information in front of me to give you a definite. Um, good question for commercial properties in town. Where all commercial properties already have that ability to contract. Of commercial use, I I wanna say, so. So we're not confusing because commercial property could confuse it by thinking if I zone commercial. Then I'm commercial, I wanna say for the purpose and the use of that. Property, um if their use is, um if they're a commercial business using, they have. The they can private contract, that that's already there established, okay. It's just we went originally in two thousand and seventeen with the first ordinance. When those commercial properties were allowed to contract privately. Um many of them did go to pri- to a private. Um however, they returned to the city service. Um and we only have a minimal amount of businesses in town that are used. Because of the cost, they came back, they came back. So then it gets. More expensive. Third parties, I guess. Well, I mean, I mean for us, we provide the dumpster at no cost to the proper commercial there. They don't have to purchase the dumpster, um we provide, you know, a recycling dumpster if no additional cost. For them to use um to to help offset that solid waste. And maybe, and and again, I mean. We have staff that also go and go and beyond, and if there's garbage sitting outside of the dumpster, they'll get out, you know. I mean, there's just a a different type of service and I don't know if that, I don't wanna, I can't speak to how a private company. If that's how they would um, you know, handle that. I would ask the clerk if there's anything I've missed or anything that you would um. Would like to reflect on that either.
I don't think so, I think that everything has been pretty explained. Or the ordinance that was passed was written very clear as to that, the expectations and what was going to be. Um passed when we passed the ordinance, so I don't think that there's any additional information that I can provide that I have in mind to provide to you.
I mean, further discussion. Is there a motion from the council?
And a motion? So we have two council options there, but it doesn't mean that your motion has to, you're just giving you two options. Um for the direction of the party.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, motion for a resolution setting council or setting. Direction and adding a section to the code of garbage. For multi-dwelling units.
Who is, uh item or recommended, uh number one has been moved. My looking at.
Yeah, option one is um. Option one. Yes.
I thought you were. But I didn't.
Oh, I was looking up the agenda.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, um so the option was okay to amend the code. And option two is the main turn, sorry, I thought the. The under the new business under A, that was the. Option one, yeah, option one.
So there has been a motion to uh on the sheet that gives council options. There's been a motion to adopt uh uh the amendment to the code, is there a second?
Motion here, she, there's a motion on the table to add. And amend the current ordinance to allow property owners to search out their party needs.
For 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 this this action, for the specific mo-. I, he, has he been the multi-dwelling units, but just for the multi-dwelling units.
Such a wow.
This is only for that, there is the ordinance currently staying that we may the mix, the multi. Um are not permitted to contract with a third party.
Unless anything will work for me, so your commercial ones that are downtown that only have three apartments upstairs, it doesn't affect them. It's only ones that are above three that fit within those categories.
Like a, like above the pharmacy and.
Yeah, so those ones would fall.
Physical therapy and.
Yeah, those ones would fall by short street, early street, the long street. Um all of those are gonna be the ones that are gonna fall underneath that thing that have three or less are not being affected by this.
So there's a motion on the floor, is there a second? Not hearing a second to the motion, is there another motion? Um by the council members.
Yeah, because there's two options.
And now there's a motion to um maintain the current ordinance, is there a second to the second? Then moved to second in the process was um for discussion, then the motion and then uh consent, so. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, so um it's passed three to one. Next up is Resolution twenty twenty-four uh one two one seven hyphen two zero six. Resolution setting council uh minute meeting uh times um. So uh this is a roll call vote, is there a motion to approve the resolution? Is there a second? Is there a discussion? Hearing them, the clerk will call the roll.
Martina.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Pretty good.
Yes.
Nick Burn, yes. Motion passes point zero.
Okay. Next item is item eleven, adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
Well, Mr. Mary, can you? Um I would just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And uh if you're traveling, safe travels and good your family time and um. Just a reminder, City Pod will be closed the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth. And I wanted to also take a moment to recognize um our public relations uh specialists. A great.
Oh, yes.
I wanted to congratulate congratulate her, she completed um one of her accreditation courses with her with. Um for her social media, um and now we have her next training planned. Where she'll have five modules um that she will, six modules. Um for public affairs and public communications, so congratulations and I mean.
Excellent details. All right, yes.
I'll be closed also on New Year's, yeah, New Year's Day. It's on New Year's Day, okay.
Is there a motion to adjourn, motion for adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye. The ayes have it, uh are there any ayes? Council member or council is adjourned.